Good afternoon, everyone. Ready to start this special meeting. And I may ask that the clerk put the letter for the special session as a matter of record. I would appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bellucci is out ill, and Mr. Moss is attending to a family matter and will be joining us later. Okay? All right. And this, the roll call?
And Mayor, if you could remind counsel to, if you're not speaking, to turn your microphones off so the reverb doesn't happen, that would be great. Or I guess I just reminded everybody.
Roll call. Councilmember Abbott. Councilmember Bellucci is absent. Councilmember Hindley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss is absent. Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Mayor Dyer?
All present excluding Mr. Moss and Mr. Bellucci.
And we'll make sure that the shutting off the green light applies especially to the mayor. So, not a problem there. Okay, at this point, we're going to have the city council briefing. Ms. Wooton? Would you like? Okay.
Thank you, though.
So, the first item is, at the request of Councilmember Wooton, Samuel Reed, the executive director of the Atlanta Citizen Review Board, will provide city council with an educational brief on Atlanta's police oversight board.
Mr. Reed, we will unmute you. If you would just pause two to three seconds before beginning your presentation. Thank you. Begin.
Hello, yes. Good afternoon. My name is Samuel L. Reed II. I am the executive director of the Atlanta Citizen Review Board. Truly excited to share the ACRB with you all today. Years ago, I was stationed aboard the USS John F. Kennedy CV-67 in Norfolk, so I had the opportunity to visit the wonderful city of Virginia Beach several times during my stay there. I've been the executive director of the Atlanta Citizen Review Board since 2012, and prior to 2012, I ran the Minneapolis Civilian Review Authority. I want to start off my presentation with briefly speaking to what civilian oversight is and is not. Civilian oversight is about citizen empowerment, citizen involvement, accountability, integrity, responsiveness, and transparency. Civilian oversight is not anti-police, not activist, and not liability. Now that I've spoken to you about what civilian oversight is and is not, I'll turn to discuss the Atlanta Citizen Review Board, ACRB. The city of Atlanta has had two previous versions of civilian oversight prior to the ACRB. Both previous versions had several things in common: large boards that barely met; we were only able to review police internal affairs investigations; no staff, and no funding. Both were deemed ineffective as later events would show. On November 21st, 2006, the death of 92-year-old Catherine Johnson, a grandmother, community mother, was killed during an illegal no-not warrant raid by Atlanta police officers. That changed everything in civilian oversight for Atlanta. City administrators can no longer ignore the outrage and outcry from the community. In response, they created the ACRB in 2007 to address citizens' concerns and officers' concerns of citizens and officers. For the citizens, the ACRB provides a trusted and fair external venue for citizens to express their grievances; for the department and officers, it provides an opportunity to receive organized and principled input into departmental policies and officers' actions. The ACRB's mission is to provide the citizens of Atlanta credible, fair, and independent investigations and decisions on Atlanta police and corrections officer misconduct complaints, and they also provide recommendations on departmental policies, training, and practices. Our work provides intentional citizen engagement that promotes inclusion, sharing, learning, and citizen education on police team. Through our work, we provide opportunities for both departments to correct officer behavior, to promote the highest standards of conduct to meet the citizens' expectations of policing. To accomplish this mission, the city provide the agency with the following powers: power to advise on policies regarding the police and corrections departments; power to select appropriate individual incidents to review and broader issues to study; to receive, investigate, mediate, and adjudicate citizen complaints; review specific complaints of incidents, including language related to race, ethnicity, religion, gender, sexual orientation, gender identity, or disability; power to initiate studies; full access to the police department and corrections, police and corrections department personnel for interviews and documents; subpoena power; power to recommend to the chiefs of police and corrections to take certain action; and the power to conduct public hearings. Structurally, the ACRB consists of an appointed citizen board and city staff. The board currently has 13 members, authorized for 15, and non-city staff members. Board members meet monthly and as needed to render decisions on citizen complaints. As the slide indicates, the board represents the diversity of the city of Atlanta and is designed to avoid the concerns of political influence. To allow board members to effectively and efficiently perform their duties, the board members must complete training. Board training includes, but is not limited to, use of force, Fourth Amendment, criminal procedure, complaint review process and preparation, police and corrections department SOPs, ethics, participating in police ride-alongs, participating in the police department's citizen academy, additional training as needed. To further ensure that the agency maintains its independence, the department organizational chart shows the reporting flow of the agency. The executive director is hired by the board and reports to the board. The city staff is responsible for carrying out the day-to-day operations and authority. The city staff manages the budget, which comes from the general fund, and maintains the working relationships for city departments, including the police and corrections departments. Now, as we turn to the operational aspects of the agency, which includes investigations, mediations, and community engagement, I want to first begin with the benefits of the ACRB ACRB investigations are conducted independently of the Atlanta Police Department. The agency has access to all records and officers for investigations. Some of the most important benefits are the opportunity for citizens to receive redress for misconduct allegations, opportunity for the department and officers to receive correction and assess actions and policies, public reporting of the agency and the department actions on most misconduct complaints, and it demonstrates the city's commitment to addressing police misconduct, as well as, as we will see from the next slide, the ACRB process is straightforward and citizen-friendly. Once a complaint is received, investigators conduct an evaluation of the complaint for jurisdictional requirements and conducts a preliminary investigation. The complaint is then presented to the board for acceptance. If accepted, an investigation is conducted into the complaint allegations. Upon completion of the investigation, the complaint investigation is presented to the board for a decision. Once the board makes a determination, the complaint investigation, findings, and determinations are sent to the chief of the respective departments for departmental action. Now, as we return to the mediation program, it started in 2016. The ACRB mediation program provides an opportunity for citizen officers to meet with a third-party neutral to discuss a complaint with the goal of perspective sharing and mutual understanding and respect. It provides citizens and officers the opportunity to resolve conflict on their terms and to the satisfaction of their needs. These mediations provide a quicker resolution to the complaint, and the respectful conversations often lead to greater satisfaction with the agency. Lastly, the discussions that occur during mediation are confidential, with only the citizen, officer, and mediator involved in the discussions. Like the investigative process, the mediation process is also straightforward. The citizen officer must both agree to mediate a qualifying complaint. If the complaint is settled, the complaint is closed, is mediated. If the complaint does not settle, it is forwarded to investigations. There is no record of the discussions included in the complaint investigation. Our third program, community engagement, is a critical function to ACRB operation. Community engagement is the lifeblood of the agency. Our community engagement program focuses on building awareness of the agency and providing community education. Community engagement is about establishing trust. The various functions of the community engagement include agency awareness, know-your-rights trainings and responsibilities, public reporting, volunteer involvement, communicating, community feedback, and outreach to citizens and officers. One of the questions we often ask is whether the agency has subpoena power and how do we use it. The ACRB has had subpoena power since 2010. The ACRB uses a subpoena power for evidence that is outside of the city's control. When the city council granted the agency subpoena power, it also added language to the ordinance that required all city personnel to participate and provide records for the ACRB investigations. We do not have to use subpoena power for city-controlled documents. Now, at the same time, the police department adjusted its policies to require all department personnel to participate in ACRB investigations and provide their records and statements. As I conclude my presentation, I'd like to stress that civilian oversight constantly develops. As policing changes, civilian oversight adjusts. Sometimes the adjustments are related to police department actions or changes in the law and expectations of the citizens. Since the ACRB was created back in 2007, the agency has had three significant ordinance changes. Most recent change being in June 2020. As with all oversight agencies, as I stated earlier, as police and citizens' demands change, the agency must change to deliver results that matter. Thankfully, the residents and visitors of Atlanta have had responsibly elected officials to enable the agency to adjust as needed. 2020 has been a major year for a change for the agency. In August 2020, the agency was added to the city charter. We are currently planning and working to implement the changes to reach our strategic goals and ultimately achieve the ACRB mission. Finally, I'll leave you with the list of must-haves for consideration of civilian oversight: trust, which goes to legitimacy and credibility of the agency; clear, consistent messaging from elected officials; independence of the agency; transparency of the agency and its work; adequate funding to be effective; staffing with qualified people; demonstrative commitment from the elected officials in the police department; community engagement; clear identification of purpose; coordination and collaboration. In conclusion, I say thank you to the Virginia Beach City Council for allowing the opportunity to share the Atlanta Citizen Review Board today. The consideration of civilian oversight is a serious undertaking. I applaud you for your interest in providing effective civilian oversight to the residents of Virginia Beach, and if you have any questions, I gladly answer questions now. Thank you.
Questions or comments from counsel?
I'd like to, just one comment. Just like to say thank you to Attorney Reed for taking the time out. Once again, I know this presentation was scheduled earlier in our agenda, I believe, last month, and there were some technical difficulties. You did work with our staff, and we did certainly apologize for those difficulties, and I just want to extend my gratitude again to you for being available once again to share this pertinent educational experience with us. Thank you so much, and I hope you enjoy the rest of your day.
Mr. Reed, this is Mayor Bobby Dyer. I just wanted to thank you for taking the time and effort to give us this informational information, and I think we're all, you know, very grateful. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, Mr. Tower has a comment.
Mr. Reed, this is Guy Tower. I'm a member of the city council. I just had a couple of questions about your mediation practice.
Mr. Tower, if you'll just go ahead and ask your questions, and we'll unmute him after you've asked, after you've finished your question.
I have two questions. One, are the mediators staff mediators, or are they private practice? And two, do the parties have to agree on a mediator, or simply do they agree to mediation and a mediator is supplied?
Pause just two to three seconds before responding.
Thank you for the question. Our mediators, they are not staff. They are independent contractors with the city. They're not associated with the Atlanta Police Department or the Atlanta Citizen Review Board. The citizen and officers both have to agree to the mediator. While they don't select the exact mediator, we try to ensure that we bring in a mediator who would be sensitive to the concerns of the complaint.
Any other questions? Okay, Mr. Reed, thank you very much, and, you know, best wishes to the folks in Atlanta. Thank you. Okay, Mr. DeHaney?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the first item on the city manager's briefing is the Lynn Haven parking use agreement. Update will be, is going to be a public, is going to be publicly heard tonight, and as such, city staff from the Parks and Recreation Department will provide an update on the proposed terms and conditions of the parking use agreement with Chick's Marina.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wood, members of council, Manager DeHaney, Michael Kirshman with Parks and Recreation. Here again, I'm just going to briefly run through the latest terms of the agreement that's being proposed between the Marina Parking and Chick's Restaurant. There has been a slight modification since the last time I was in front of you back in July. So, just for a little bit of background, I know that most of you or all of you are familiar with the site location. This is on the Lynn Haven, next to Chick's Restaurant. We have 50 wet slips at the marina, really through an agreement with the Army Corps of Engineers. The city receives, the last estimate I got from Public Works was about $1.5 million in services per year in terms of dredging and maintaining the inlet, as long as we maintain a public marina in the Lynn Haven. So, this has been here for quite some time, and it is tied to a federal agreement for those services. We have, all the spots, all the slips are currently rented, and we do have a waiting list, which is a good thing. You see what the fees are. The fees vary because they're based on the exact size of the slip. Even a couple of feet difference gives you a different fee. And we have about a half dozen or seven slips for the fire police and EMS as well. There are 90 permitted spaces at the marina, so none of these spaces are available to the public. They are permit parking only for the slipholders, or if and when we enter into an agreement with somebody, as we have in the past. So, we've had, we have a long history with our, with our neighbor, Chick's. We've had a long history with all the neighbors out there. The most recent example of a parking arrangement with them was when the bulkhead failed two years ago. We had to get a construction easement from Chick's Restaurant. For that construction easement, we provided to them 40 spaces to park during, to use during that project, as opposed to paying them for a construction easement. So, that all worked out. Once that project was over, that project is done, the bulkhead is repaired. Then COVID hit. When COVID hit, they did request a temporary agreement. You know, hey, can we use some of the parking spaces over there? We're going to put some dining out in the parking lot, and can we use some parking spaces? The previous interim city manager agreed to that, with the caveat being, any permanent agreement moving forward, we'll let you park there during COVID for now, but we will take this to council. We'll make this a public input process, and either we'll enter into a formal agreement or not. So, that's where we stand right now. The terms of the agreement are relatively straightforward. You can see where the parking is. Everything in blue would be available in a non-exclusive use for Chick's. So, what that means is, the slipholders have equal access to those spaces as well. What Chick's would be paying for is $50 per spot per month. They're asking for April through September. They can add on months if they want to, not an issue for Parks and Recreation. They would pay one month in advance. There's 13 spaces along what I would call the northern edge, 11 spaces on the south. Those 11 spaces on the south would become available after 4:00 PM. So, this is different than the original agreement that came before you in July, which was just all 24 spaces at that side of the marina, would be available for Chick's in a non-exclusive use. This one is, the far 13 spaces are available at any time, if they're not being used by slipholders. The other 11 become available after 4:00 PM. Everything else in the term is the same. This is a one-year agreement. It can be renewed for up to five years. There are some rules that Chick's has to comply with, and they would pay $50 per space or $1,200 monthly for their right to use those spaces during their busy season. So, with that, just one other thing. I know that there's always questions about when did we notify the residents and area people and condo associations, as well as the slipholders? Of course, we notified them back in July. They've been waiting for the meeting. As soon as this went out in the Virginia Pilot with the official notification on the 11th, our staff notified all the slipholders on October 12th. They were notified that it's coming up for this date. They were not notified of the change from the previous version, which was that some of the spaces would only be available after 4:00 PM, as well as we notified the Lynn Haven Colony Civic League, the Shore Drive Community Coalition, the Lynn Haven Landing Condo Association, and the Lesnar Cove Condo Association as well on the 12th. With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Mr. Wood?
Thank you. I just, I wanted to thank, thank the staff for the hard work that you all have done on this, because this has been a reasonably contentious issue, and you all have done a really good job of actually doing the survey as to the usage, and then the fact that it's non-exclusive, I think, is going to certainly help with it. But I just wanted to thank you for all the hard work. You all have done a great job on this.
Thank you. And all the kudos go to Rick Rowe and his team that runs the Lynn Haven Marina, as well as the boat slips on the other side as well. They've been doing a great job working with the slipholders, as they have for years, as well as the neighborhood.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. I know that we do have, I know this is only the general for this evening, for a public hearing, and I believe there are three or four speakers sign up to speak.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on.
Mr. Mayor, next item is an update on the motorized scooter franchise amendment. Brian Sellers of the city manager's office will provide a briefing on the proposed terms and conditions that the vendors would like changed for their right to operate the motorized scooters in certain parts of the city. The purpose of this briefing is to get some kind of general direction from council in terms of next steps.
Welcome, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Manager, Mr. Ingram. Thank you for having me this afternoon. It's been a little bit since we've discussed motorized scooters, and in this case, I'm coming here to update you on the franchise license agreement process. In terms of, let's see here. Let's see here. Okay, here we go. All right, there we go. Brief agenda, going to go over a background with you, since it's been a little bit since we've visited with you on this topic, go over the six areas that the companies would like to, are seeking modifications to terms, and then three options for your consideration moving forward. In terms of background, we've had about a two-year history with motorized scooters in Virginia Beach. In midsummer of 2018, the company Bird deployed scooters in downtown Norfolk, and right after that, they were deployed in the oceanfront area of Virginia Beach. They stayed throughout the summer and winter and were pulled off the streets by Bird in the winter. They reemerged in late April with the Something in the Water Festival of 2019, and they stayed through the fall. In between that time and July, Lime, another company, deployed motorized scooters everywhere else in the city except for the resort, so kind of complemented Bird's deployment that was in the resort area. In order to be, and during this time, motorized scooters were operating in accordance with the city code as it stood at that time without any changes. And, but in order to be accommodating and incentivize motorized scooters from staying off the boardwalk, off the bike path, and off of the sidewalks in the resort area, you approved an ordinance that allowed them to share the trolley lane with bicycles as well. However, after a month of complaints, you adopted an ordinance in August of 2019, about a month later, effectively prohibiting them from the resort proper, basically from the Arctic Avenue point all the way east. So, with the adoption of that ordinance, staff received direction to go ahead and do a stakeholder involvement process. In addition to 14 meetings, over 300 folks that were involved, 14 different organizations, like, thank Julie Hill and her team, they conducted a survey of over 5,800 respondents to help us gather input as to what regulations we could put in place in order to create a safer environment for the shared mobility option. And in addition to that, we stood up a shared mobility services task force that kind of ranged in terms of staff, from public safety to the commissioner of revenues office, to planning, to Parks and Recreation, number of subject matter experts at the table, including public works, traffic engineering. And in mid-November, you adopted an ordinance, taking advantage of some enabling legislation at the, in the state code level, that would require all rented motorized scooters to have franchise licenses to be able to operate in public spaces. So, with all of that input, and with the help of the city attorney's office, Dana Horemeyer, we created an RFP document, which outlined a number of regulations that reflected best practices across the country, and in particular, Commonwealth of Virginia cities and counties that have shared mobility programs. And we briefed you on that on January 7th, went over all of the terms that we were planning on advertising, and then that very next week, we advertised an RFP. It was on the street for just over a month or so through January and February. We received those responses, and in workmanlike fashion, we evaluated them and came to you with a recommendation in March. Unfortunately, the pandemic prohibited us from being able to come to you for action, so we took the next available slot where you could do public business at an in-person public meeting, and came to you on May 19th, at which time you approved an ordinance authorizing city manager to grant four franchise licenses to Bird, Lime, Spin, and VO. And in furtherance, putting those regulations in place with the franchise licenses, you adopted an ordinance that allowed motorized scooters, again, back in the shared trolley lane, so long as they were at a 10 mile per hour speed limit or less. That was your first meeting in July. The very next week, we received a letter from the four companies, basically asking to renegotiate six areas of terms. And the reason for that was threefold, really. They indicated that COVID-19 had an impact on their operations, which affected their bottom line to operate as a business, a shared mobility business. line to operate as a, as a business, a shared mobility business. They indicated that they did further due diligence and kind of recognized there were some terms in the, embedded in the RFP, in effect, the agreement now that conflicted with some of their policies. And third was they did some due diligence with their insurance underwriters regarding some of the insurance requirements and, and really the waiver of liability clause that we had in our agreement. So before we came to you, we wanted to do our completed staff work and we reconvened our shared mobility services task force, again, internal SMEs, as well as benchmarked ourselves against four localities in the Commonwealth that had shared mobility services programs. Those are Arlington and Fairfax Counties and the cities of Norfolk and cities of Richmond. And the six areas that the companies were seeking to renegotiate are, are right here and I'm going to go through each of them briefly. A fundamental one for the city of Virginia Beach, if you want to operate a franchise on public space, public right-of-way, public property, is to identify the city. It's pretty fundamental and the city attorney's office advised that we should not modify any part of that. The companies agreed, so we moved forward with that one and keeping that in. The insurance piece originally, our risk management folks in our finance department, they canvassed the risk management industry across the country for folks that had shared mobility service type of programs. They also touched base with our loss prevention resources and they recommended a general liability insurance clause of $1 million with an aggregate of $5 million. When the companies submitted their agreements, one of the companies submitted $1 million of general liability insurance per occurrence with a $10 million umbrella. So we offered that up as the new standard and apparently the four companies communicated with each other and kind of compromised that they could do combined coverage of, of $8 million as outlined here. The bottom line with this, and I'm no insurance expert, but in consulting with our risk management folks, that's basically a better coverage than we originally had in the RFP to begin with. So, and it's in keeping with best practices, so, so that's why we agreed to, to this level of insurance. Improper parking. So this was a hot topic while the scooters were on the streets for a couple of summers and we had a pretty strict clause that essentially said that if you improperly parked scooters, you are to, the company is to send out representatives to rectify that situation within 30 minutes or receive a $50 per occurrence penalty or fine. And when we canvassed or we surveyed the four localities, it ranged. None of them had that tight of a timeframe. One of them had 24 hours that upon receiving a complaint that the company would have 24 hours to remedy that situation. So where we ended up as being reasonable would be to respond, for the companies to respond within two hours during normal business hours and then four hours during nighttime hours. And we believe that's reasonable based on our survey of the other localities in the Commonwealth. Scooter impoundment. So the way that the code currently reads is that if a scooter or similar type of device is parked illegally or in an improper location, that the city can retrieve that and impound it and the cost per, the code is $10 per day per device. And so what this clause does is effectively just recognize that, hey, these scooters are a little bit different, there's a separate franchise license that they're granted with a whole other set of terms that at first will work through the agreement and try to remedy the situation that way rather than just going right and picking up the scooters and impounding them, that we would have a process in place to try to address that first. It saves staff's time in terms of impoundment and the process of, of that and it also saves time and resources on the scooter's end. In a similar fashion, revoking the franchise license, the way that the agreement is currently worded is that if there were five violations of the agreement at all, that the license could be revoked for 365 days, so for a year. And what we've agreed to, we've basically indicated to the scooter companies that we would work with you to remedy situations on each incident. They said, well, that's not the way their agreement is written. It's written that if there's five violations, you can revoke our license. So what we're proposing or what, what a compromise we're offering instead is that there'd be an escalation process that if there were repeated violations that weren't addressed by the scooter companies, that then it would escalate up to that point of revoking the license, but there would be sufficient notice and a process in place to work through first. So the crux of, of where we're a little bit of an impasse on is the waiver of liability clause. So there's a clause in, in the agreement that, the license agreement that essentially says that no company shall require users, riders of the scooters, to waive their liability in order to use the device. And the scooter companies indicated that, well, wait, you know, if you rent a car, if you rent a jet ski, if you rent similar equipment, those companies, you know, require a waiver of liability. In addition, they indicated that it would be cross prohibitive or not possible to acquire insurance policies when touching base with their underwriters. So they've offered to essentially not only, you know, waive liability for themselves, but have the cities and its partners be part of that waiver of liability. But still, our city attorney's office, we and staff in general have concerns that if there's any waiver of liability, that not only riders, but injured parties that may have been injured from the rider of the motorized scooter would not have any redress, you know, other than to the city first versus the companies or other parties. So that's why we're recommending to, to keep that clause in. So lastly, three options for consideration or any hybrid that, that you should choose to direct staff. One would be to make amendments to the franchise license agreement, you know, any or all of, of those that have been discussed here before you today and bring them back to you for consideration to amend the agreement, at which time the motorized scooter companies could deploy scooters because per previous stipulation, we had to be in Ford Virginia Phase Three of the COVID guidelines and, and we still are. So that would be one option. The other one would be to terminate the procurement process with the thought being that there are so many, you know, substantive changes in the agreement that perhaps there were some companies that would have responded if these changes were in place and, you know, so they didn't know there was an option basically. And, but before we did that, it would be if, if you had any recommended changes to the agreement, to the RFP for us to do that. A third option would be to terminate the procurement process and restart it with the original terms to see if there are any other motorized scooter companies that would be interested in responding and, and we could still make, you know, some changes to those conditions. So I'll stand by for any questions you have and I thank you for your time.
Mr. Tower.
Thank you, Brian. I know you've done a lot of work on this and so have a lot of other people. Thanks for all of that. Question about the, leaving the scooters parked in the right-of-way illegally. What happens if the scooter is in a place where a public safety official says that's, that's a danger to the public? I mean, it's just hard to describe every, every circumstance of where a scooter might be left in the public right-of-way. What, literally what happens if a police officer comes upon a scooter and says, well, that's, that shouldn't be there?
A couple of options to consider would be if it's just a matter of, you know, it's laying prone and sitting it upright and parallel on the sidewalk, then, then they could do that. It shouldn't obviously be their responsibility to do that everywhere, but if it's in fact, you know, a danger and trip and hazard, they could certainly do that. And then, you know, we're developing protocol where there's an easy relay system between police and whatever precinct it may be and what will be parking management who'll be managing the program or scooter representative, scooter company representative.
So what, what advice are we going to give citizens when they find scooters, one, in the public right-of-way that they think it's a danger and two, in their own private?
So it would kind of be the same option. It would be they could move them themselves, which I agree that, you know, they should not have to, or they could call the number that is, that is on the scooter. And again, they should not be obligated to do that, but those are the two remedies that, that we have. Now, you know, in saying that, these motorized scooter companies are supposed to have representatives, management companies that are based in Virginia Beach that are roaming and, you know, should be rectifying these situations that they see them.
So, but for, if I understand it right, if they call, they should expect that the, there'll be a response in terms of the agreement that we have with, within a couple of hours?
Yes, sir, that's correct. That's absolutely correct.
Tell me a little more about the waiver of liability clause. Where, where are we vis a vis other cities in Virginia, for example?
So I think it was only Richmond that had that same clause and only Bolt, which is a different company. And I believe Bird is gonna, is gonna locate there, so I'm not, they didn't, they weren't really clear on how they were going to address that, but none of the other three companies are located in Richmond. So Richmond was the only other city in Virginia that had that prohibited a waiver of liability clause. So.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Abbott.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Am I loud enough? I'm sorry. I shouldn't touch the microphone, I know. Well, I, I would actually like to go back to slide 12 and further discuss the waiver of liability because I'm concerned that we're trying to do something that we really... in Richmond, since you said that's an example of a location that does the same thing, do they, how many operators do they have in Richmond?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Abbott, they have two that I'm aware of and I know that there's a lot of fluctuations every, from week to week with COVID, but Bolt is one and then I believe Bird was going to deploy if they haven't already, so two that I know of.
Potentially two, okay. And then do we know what that did to the pricing for the use of those scooters in Richmond?
I, I do not know, but I, what we've seen is that the scooter companies, they won't be rented if they're not market competitive. So to my knowledge, you know, it says something that there's only two operators there, I guess, you know, it does make it a little bit more stringent environment, but I don't know if the waiver of liability clause is the only reason. I just don't know that.
Well, we do.
But, but the market rate is competitive as far as I know in terms of cost for renting a scooter.
If there's a way, I'd be interested in knowing what their user ship is in Richmond and how it affected the cost of utilizing it because obviously if it's not cost-effective and nobody's going to use them, then what's the point? I'm also very interested in knowing what other cities liability clause looks like, especially, I think there's a fair point that's been made that when you rent anything, you're pretty much saying you're responsible. And, and I, I understand why our city attorney's office is leery of that, but I am concerned about it. On slide nine, we talk about the, the process for, wait, was it slide nine? No, no, I must have written down the wrong slide. The, where we're talking about the process of revoking their permit. Okay, slide 10. Has that process been created yet?
Yes. So it's, it's a little verbose, so that's why I didn't put it on, you know, these slides already are, but it, it basically just outlines a reasonable escalation process which the companies have agreed to, the language.
Could we get a copy of that?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Thank you. And then slide seven, I just had a clarification question. Is it 8 million aggregate or eight mil, an $8 million umbrella?
It's a, so it's 1 million per occurrence, 2, 2 million aggregate and 5 million umbrella, I believe.
So their general liability would be the one with the two ag and then an 8 million umbrella on top of it?
5 million on top.
Oh, a 5, so it would be a combination of eight.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Jones.
My question is, are you going to have people under 18 renting these things?
So, so the majority of motorized scooter companies in the country require you to be 18. Do they? So some adult or somebody over 18 has to provide, would have contributed to somebody younger than that renting it. So their agreement requires that with identification, the person be 18, but there are ways that we have found that are around, that, to get around that. But the companies generally require them to be 18.
Well, the, the issue is if you have somebody under 18 and they haven't waived liability...
Yes, yes, sir.
Then you have a problem there in the sense that the adults that are connected to that minor have a lawsuit if, if something happens. And it just seems like a big risk as far as I'm concerned for the city to assume any liability in a case like that. I'm really hesitant to allow, allow them at all if that liability is out there. It's a pretty serious matter, I think, because you're going to have young people riding these things and sooner or later, and probably sooner, some young person is going to get hurt on one and then we're going to have a problem, so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jones. Anybody else? Okay, Brian, thank you very much.
So, Mr. Mayor, I was, we were kind of moving forward, seeing if we could have some direction on, on what the pleasure of the council is in terms of proceeding with one of these three options or any, any other direction you may have at, at this time or kind of in between.
Okay, Ms. Wood.
Well, I, I don't think we have enough information right now. I'd like to get some of the information that Ms. Abbott was asking for and, and I think the points Mr. Jones was making regarding people under 18, I think we need to, we need to find out about that and I, and I don't think we can take lightly what our legal staff says in terms of protecting the city. So I, I don't think we're ready yet. I think if, if we can get this information, I'd suggest bringing it back, but.
Okay, does anybody object to getting the more information and, you know, updated briefing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Dehaney.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the next item up is a convention and visitors bureau marketing and tourism update. Deputy City Manager Ron Williams and Tiffany Russell of CBB will be giving a presentation on how our summer season progressed in terms of tourism as well as informing you on the proposed fall marketing campaign.
Thank you, welcome, Ron.
Mayor, members of council, just to put this in context, this is an informational briefing for you this afternoon. The work of the CBB task force is going on every other week and we expect to be bringing a recommendation to you hopefully in the late November, December timeframe if all goes well. But the context of this is essentially, or giving you the feedback about what you did when you made the appropriations in the spring and in this, in this adopted budget, essentially to rescue our destination marketing efforts by making the transfer of tip fund monies to our tap fund. And Tiffany is going to give you an overview of how that program performed and then what the, what we have going on right now.
Okay, welcome, Tiffany.
Thank you, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for the opportunity to, to be here today. I'd also like to mention that I am joined in the audience by Bill Hambury, the CBB's executive advisor, and Ron Coolman, our interim director. I'd also like to note before we get started, just a personal thank you to Guy Tower and Rosemary Wilson for your contributions to the Advertising Advisory Council that meets every month with our council-appointed members to review our advertising initiatives. So my name is Tiffany Russell. I'm a member of the marketing communications team and over the past three months, Virginia Beach has become a shining example of resiliency and recovery for our destination marketing efforts despite the disastrous economic fallout of COVID-19. And that's largely in part thanks to your support for our efforts, our local tourism business leaders advocating for us and destination marketing and of course, city leadership and all of the efforts that they made this summer. I will say from a destination marketing standpoint, it has been an uphill ascent. We've constantly been pivoting with our messaging, with our creative, with our target markets, even our safety initiatives to make sure that our consumers, our potential visitors, our returning visitors had trust and confidence in picking Virginia Beach as the destination of choice during this pandemic. We had a very nimble marketing strategy that paid off and I'm pleased to share with you looking at this. And I'm pleased to share with you, looking at this chart, of the top 25 DMAs in the country, Virginia Beach has, has led the nation with 13 straight weeks of hotel occupancy over 60%. If you look at this chart, the Norfolk-Virginia Beach DMA is the red line, and you can see the other 24 top DMA markets in the country. For reference, the very bottom line is Oahu, Hawaii. So my thoughts are certainly with all of my peers and colleagues who do destination marketing all over the country, particularly in urban markets right now.
Mr. Wood.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to ask a question about this data.
Sure, okay.
You, you've said the Norfolk-Virginia Beach line, so is that not just the city of Virginia Beach?
Correct. When-
So what's that universe?
When Smith Travel Research reports out top 25 DMA markets, they're combining the Norfolk hotel inventory with Virginia Beach for our DMA. So this number is representing both cities combined.
All right, do, do we have data on just our city? Because I think that's probably what we care about.
We do. We certainly do. I don't have just Virginia Beach, though, compared to the top 25 DMAs.
Can we get that?
I'll, I'll have to ask Smith Travel Research. I'm happy to. We pay for this particular report, so I'm happy to inquire. This chart does show just Virginia Beach hotel occupancy recovery year over year. You can see that the very last point, that's the last week in August, we nearly closed the gap. We were just 2.3% away from closing the gap. Our July hotel occupancy reached 74.3%, and August was 71.8%, which we're very proud of because that brought our hospitality workers back to work. And I, I will say that we just received the September Smith Travel Research report. We're showing 64.3% occupancy for the month of September in Virginia Beach, which is down only 8% year over year. However, this number does not represent the other revenues and impacts to our restaurant, retail, and attraction partners. Smith Travel Research does provide revenue numbers, and so that canyon that you see during COVID, before we were able to close that gap, does represent a bleeding loss to our hotel partners in particular, that hotel revenue of $81 million in lost revenue due to the pandemic, which is a 34% year-to-date decrease January through August. I did mention I have the September numbers. I wasn't able to update this chart in time. But we're looking at a 31.1% decrease in hotel revenues between January and September. Looking at average daily rate, this data is also provided by Smith Travel Research. You can see that the canyon wasn't as deep, but it, it was still impacted. But we're pleased that rate integrity was able to be maintained the further we got into the summer. This number does represent an average of all of our hotel partners that participate in Smith Travel Research. We have 70% participation, which is one of the highest participation rates across the country that are contributing to Smith Travel Research. If I were to break out this chart for you based on hotel chain scale, say, economy chain scale versus our luxury properties, you would see more of a variance. And our economy hotels during COVID experienced the least amount of drop in ADR. We think that's largely in part due to the fact that so many consumers during this time had budget impacts, whether that was furloughs, job loss, they were just more budget-conscious in general. So, so I did want to make note of that, that these numbers do represent an average of all of our hotel properties combined. And now on to the recovery story itself. There are very apparent reasons Virginia Beach was so successful in being able to close that gap rather quickly. And there were also those less obvious reasons, kind of the behind-the-scenes, the marketing impacts in the work of the city that helped contribute to that cause. So we're gonna start going through these. Obviously, Virginia Beach is a very familiar destination. We have a high repeat visitation rate of close to 75%. This proved to be so valuable for consumers who were looking for traditional, more comfortable destinations. This wasn't the time during, during a pandemic. They're gonna go try out a new destination to go to. We like to say Virginia Beach is known as a legacy destination, and that certainly aided us during this time. We're also rated, year after year, as one of the top beach destinations, and our boardwalk has received so many accolades over the years. This was also very important because we're consumers right now who are just wanting to get out of the house, take their family somewhere. The number one place they wanted to go was the beach. And the number one activity they wanted to do was outdoor recreation. So Virginia Beach was perfectly positioned for that, and they knew about it. The CBB has worked so hard, particularly over the last four years, to strategically increase awareness and familiarity amongst our target markets so that they think of Virginia Beach and we're the first destination that comes to mind. We have increased that ranking over time, and it just really helped pay off for us this summer. Virginia Beach is also a very reasonably priced destination. So a lot of cities you might think of when you're thinking about going to the beach, you might think of them as a luxury destination or maybe a deals-type destination. Certainly, we have competitors that position themselves this way. But Virginia Beach was able to offer all consumers, no matter their budget or what type of lodging partners they wanted to, to spend money with, whether that's a hotel or a short-term rental. We had it all. So we were really able to reach a lot of consumers with that message that no matter what you're looking for, we have that here. During COVID-19, we all know that the travel industry has been hit hard, particularly our airports and our, you know, consumers not willing to fly right now. That really, unfortunately, for the airlines, but benefited Virginia Beach because we're such a strong drive-to destination, strategically located 500 miles for one-third of the nation's population. When consumers decided to experience the great American road trip this summer during COVID, we were so easy to get to. We certainly positioned ourselves as an easy drive-to destination as this emerging trend occurred. In multiple national surveys, Virginia Beach continues to be considered one of the safest cities in America. Most recently, in June 2020, Advisor, Advisor Smith released a study naming Virginia Beach as the number one safest large city in America, based on 3,000 city data findings. This reputation continued to better position Virginia Beach in the minds of consumers as a safe place to go. Meanwhile, we also know that the idea of safety is continuing to evolve in the mind of the consumer and the mom. And when they're thinking about, where do I go right now during a pandemic and during the social unrest? Where can I really feel safe and just be able to escape it all? So Virginia Beach also, I think, did something so brilliant, and I'm really proud of the Beach Ambassador and Clean Team program because that visibly gave consumers something to look at, to let them know that Virginia Beach was really investing in public health and safety. We were able to take that initiative and also combine all of the efforts by our local business partners, who were making their own pledges to increase public health and safety. And we were able to wrap all those initiatives in this one program called Summer Smarter. It's fascinating when you go to visitvirginiabeach.com, the consumers who were reading about all of the efforts by our local businesses to maintain public health and safety, they were spending three to four times as much time on that particular section of our website than any other piece of content. We knew it was important, and we knew it was a major driver in making their travel decisions. In terms of an investment, the Virginia Beach government astutely decided to continue to fund destination marketing. And this is during a time when even the hotel and meals tax revenues were declining in the early days of the pandemic. We have spent between March and the end of fall, close to $10 million in advertising. That was a major commitment from you and our community to maintain the viability of the hospitality industry. I'm gonna be really excited here in a few slides to show you the ROI and how we're measuring the return of that investment. Prior to the pandemic, we had already started to establish partners that we could work with to make sure our campaigns were able to be executed quickly, that they were flexible and very tactically driven. I will make a note here that the Finn Partners, which is our new PR firm, they came on board in July. We have a 12-month contract with them, and they really helped round out this suite of partners to complement and supplement what the in-house team was doing. We're really thankful to have them on board. Orange 142 is our digital media vendor. They're based out of Texas. That we worked with previous campaigns with much success, so we certainly continue to use them as a media partner. And then we've also obviously wanted to hang on to I Am Other and Pharrell's creative team. As you recall, back in February, Robbie Wells and I presented to you the idea of the We're Open campaign, which we were so excited to launch. Little did we know, nine days after we finally launched that campaign into the market, we had to shut it down. But we've always kept that in our back pocket during the pandemic in hopes to get back there. I'm gonna show you in a little bit how we did that. In addition to the We're Open campaign and the evolution that we had with that since the beginning of the pandemic, we also were able to do something new. And I think during a pandemic or a crisis, we obviously, we have so much historical data on visitors to Virginia Beach, but we wanted to be open to new things because we didn't want to just assume that the people who came to Virginia Beach before were gonna be visitors now. We didn't want to assume that new markets wouldn't be a viable option for us. And so our partnership with Visit Norfolk to launch a joint attractions pass, a value deals pass, has proved to be one of the top-performing campaign initiatives during COVID to drive hotel booking revenue. And I will also show you some of that creative here shortly. Here's a look at that staged strategy from a marketing and advertising standpoint. You can see from when COVID started, that initial response. We partnered briefly with Virginia Tourism Corporation for a campaign called We'll Be Waiting For You. But we thankfully, with your investment and support, were able to become a lot more aggressive really quickly to help jumpstart the tourism economy. We transitioned into another phased response, supporting U.S. Travel Association, a lot of live streaming of our beach to show that our beaches were open for fitness and fun and fishing. All this time, we're getting ready to, hopefully, when the executive orders allowed us to, re, put out into the market the We're Open campaign. We also were creating some, some unique creative about the nostalgia of Virginia Beach to really tie into that emotion, that female audience that makes the travel decisions, that was looking for a comfortable place to go and how Virginia Beach has always been there for them. And that actually was one of our top responding creative executions as well. It's best practice in destination marketing to make sure that all of the messaging that we put out into the marketplace is integrated across all of our communication channels, whether that's our paid ads, to writing our blog, to posting on our social media channel, to collaborating with the city's communications office. We were able to provide so much support to the city in addition to making sure VisitVirginiaBeach.com really became the source of information for travelers looking for a beach destination. And then, of course, we increased, tri-folded our partnerships with our local businesses to make sure that locals were supporting them during the initial run of the, the COVID pandemic and those executive orders when we saw a lot of takeout and just people, you know, driving up and doing a lot more online ordering. So we did some local advertising with tip funds during the time, and then we were obviously able to transition out of market as Virginia Beach opened up. All of the messaging is still centered around these four key message points. Our wide-open beaches and our outdoor recreational opportunities. The regional value pass is something we continue to evolve and make sure those who are more budget-conscious consumers right now can come to Virginia Beach and experience a lot of different activities, dining, hotel packages, and more. The public health and safety initiatives, we've actually evolved the Summer Smarter pledge right now, since it's not summer anymore, into VB Smarter. And that just continues throughout the shoulder season to also be a landing page of interest for our consumers and our easy drive-to destination message. So I'm gonna show you a compilation of four commercials. There's gonna be just a few seconds' gap to show you how this integrated messaging and the staged strategy came to life. Again, this is only one small example. We all love commercials, so I wanted to make sure y'all saw them. But we trafficked hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of ads over the last few months. So I'm pleased to show you just a sample of that work.
The beaches of Virginia Beach are open. And this year, we'll summer smarter. We've worked tirelessly to define the gold standard in beach safety and cleanliness. And when you're ready, we're open and ready for you and your family. Come relax and recharge. Come enjoy the beach and all it has to offer. We're waiting for you. The beaches of Virginia Beach are open. In good times and bad, our beaches have always been there for us. Ready to help us relax and recharge, to find peace among chaos, to escape and make memories. This year, we'll summer smarter. We've worked tirelessly to define the gold standard in beach safety and cleanliness. And when you're ready, we're open for you and your family. Come rediscover the beaches of Virginia Beach. We're waiting for you.
Virginia Beach is open.
We're open.
We're open.
We're ready for you.
And your family.
Virginia Beach is open.
We're open.
We're ready for you.
And your family.
We are open.
Save this summer in Norfolk-Virginia Beach. Thank you. I hope y'all enjoyed those commercials as much as I still do with my feet tapping to that music. Again, that partnership with the I Am Other and Pharrell continues, and we're excited, hopefully, in the next few months, to show you what we have planned for spring and how we're gonna continue to evolve that We're Open message. This is a look at the target markets that the CBB decided to launch these campaign efforts, based on previous campaigns that we had done in the digital space and looking at particular household incomes that have had a propensity to respond the most to Virginia Beach destination marketing ads. So you can see from the age 27 to 36-year-old millennial market, we're looking at household incomes with $85,000-plus. Gen X, which is 37 to 50-year-olds, $85,000-plus household incomes. Baby boomers, 51 to 69, with household incomes of $110,000-plus. We also obviously target psychographically. We're, we're talking to consumers who, based on their online search behaviors, have shown an interest in beach destinations. In particular markets, we really beefed up our in-state advertising more than we ever had before, assuming that in-state would want to do the short getaway. We did go down to Raleigh, up to really heavily in the Pennsylvania market, and out to Ohio. Just to give you an idea of our top arrival markets between April and September, this is in order based on arrivalist data. The markets that came to visit us were from Richmond, then DC, Raleigh, then Philly, Roanoke, New York, which is interesting because we didn't advertise in New York, Baltimore, Pittsburgh, and then Harrisonburg. We also made the decision to pivot all of our advertising almost 100% entirely in the digital space. We just simply needed the flexibility to be able to, to switch over to what was performing the best. And some of the advertising tactics we relied more heavily on in previous campaigns or pre-pandemic, like billboards or traditional TV. We just couldn't respond fast enough to make changes if that market that we had invested in all of a sudden became a hotspot. So digital gave us that flexibility to, to move and optimize towards which target audience was most interested in coming. Out of those three demographic profiles that I showed you, we really saw more the millennial target market responding the most and arriving into Virginia Beach. We receive every week consumer preference- We receive every week consumer preference and perception data about their willingness to travel during the pandemic. And the boomer audience, we did want to make sure we included them because of that multi-generational travel trend. But we just haven't seen their willingness to travel right now during the pandemic. So they're in the mix. And again, we let the audience decide for us who is wanting to come visit. And then we retarget and optimize towards that particular demographic. This is just a look at the breakdown of what we started with in our digital advertising. And of course, we don't just set it and forget it. We're working with our media partners every week to revise our media plans and the creative that's going out. We were also very fortunate. Unlike many of my peers and colleagues and other destination marketing organizations all over the country, we were fully staffed. And that meant that we were able to respond quickly when most other destination marketing organizations were furloughing or completely laying off staff or not having any marketing and advertising investment at all. This is huge because normally the travel space, you probably receive ads in the past from all sorts of destinations and it's a very cluttered space. But because of our investment and the fact that we had 11, 12 people on my marketing communications team, plus these, plus these partners, we were able to crank and we didn't stop. We worked around the clock and really tried to take advantage of that time when everyone else was just trying to figure out what to do. We also had the blessing of having Bill Hambury come in. And, and I say the blessing because Bill Hambury, as an executive advisor to oversee the marketing and sales component of the CBB, proved to be so valuable. His experience as former CEO of Destination DC right during 9/11 was so valuable. Bill, thank you because I know you're here today. He was able to make sure stakeholders understood that the CBB was so committed to making sure we could get those businesses back to work and that the investment that they had advocated for was being used responsibly. And here's what that ROI looks like. I love this platform, Adara. We were able to secure this software tool thanks to your appropriation in the spring from the tip fund to the tap fund. This was a new tool for the CBB and I don't think I'll ever do destination marketing without it again. And I'll tell you why. Adara allows me to take my ads, and not all my ads, but the ones that allow, that the media vendor allows me to pixel it and see, did it drive a hotel search? Did it drive a hotel booking? And if it did drive a hotel booking, how much revenue was generated off that ad? So now I'm able to optimize our creative. And again, this is just one tool in my toolbox, but I'm able to optimize the creative towards what's actually driving hotel revenues. Now, Adara does have a few disclaimers that I want to make sure I communicate to you. They obviously can't see every hotel booking on the internet. We don't have access to 100% of the internet. That would be a dream come true as a marketer. But we, they were able to partner with about 200-plus travel partners. They're able to share, they've got partnerships with the Marriott's and the Hyatt's to get booking data while following all the consumer privacy compliance issues there. They're also able to pixel our website, VisitVirginiaBeach.com, which receives 3.3 million visits. They were only able to pixel half of those visits. But this is so fascinating that with a $1.7 million media buy in the digital space that I was able to monitor and follow, that was directly attributed to $12.8 million in Virginia Beach hotel revenue. And that is just a sample of the true impact. So I share that with great pride. I'm also able to see that that 1.7 million drove 1.27 hotel searches. And this tool moving forward, not only does it help me optimize our creative, but I'm able to benchmark future campaigns against this data. So now where are we today? We've got this great story of recovery. We are still in the thick of recovery. Again, the shoulder season is going to be really tough for us because for the first time, we're having to almost 100% rely on that leisure traveler when we've in the past relied more heavily on meetings, conventions and groups. So we've launched this new campaign initiative called Surf Sand and Study. This is a test campaign where we're actually able to go in and target families in 100% virtual or e-learning communities or talk to consumers who have raised their hand in the online space. We know they're remote working to come to Virginia Beach and use our natural assets as their backdrop to continue working or have their families, their, their kids learn from Virginia Beach. So we're hoping this will be successful. It really just launched when consumers received these ads and clicked through for more information. They're served a variety of different hotel packages and attraction offers, particularly geared for that distance learner. So the road ahead is tough, but I'm really proud of all of my team's efforts, our media partners. I'm so thankful to our local business community and especially to you for understanding the importance of tourism advertising. When we're able to generate revenue for our local economy that provides quality of life and obviously tax revenues to support vital city services for our residents. And I'm looking forward to the future. I know it's a little uncertain, but I'm optimistic and positive we're going to be able to make a difference again. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Any comments? Okay, Mr. Wood, then Mr. Tower.
I wanted to go back to the data. If you could go to charts five and then six.
Sure.
I'm just confused what data is strictly Virginia Beach and what is part of this consolidated Norfolk-Virginia Beach.
The only data point that the CBB collects from Smith Travel Research that combines the Norfolk-Virginia Beach DMA is this one slide here.
So go to the next one. And it indicates the source down at the bottom.
That is also Smith Travel Research.
So that's, that's also just Virginia Beach. That's both cities?
No, this is just Virginia Beach Hotel Occupancy Recovery. So every week, we have 70% of our hotel partners that directly supply data to STR.
Okay, so then everything, so just that one, that one slide, everything forward to that is all Virginia Beach?
Correct. The DMA market slide from, just want to understand, I can make sure I get clarity on that. Is when you look at, they're looking just at DMAs. So that might include Minneapolis-St. Paul DMA versus Norfolk-Virginia Beach.
What's a DMA?
It is a, oh my goodness. No, it's metro area. Thank you.
So it's not like a, it's not an MSA because MSA is Virginia Beach, Norfolk, Chesapeake, or whatever it is. Yeah. So I mean, and I guess that's, that's kind of important because whatever that slide represents, it's adding Norfolk into it skews it because they're, you know, it's not exactly a tourism destination. And so if we're doing stuff that's tourism related, then we need to see how we're performing, not necessarily against the national average. The other stuff that you have is more valuable, I think, but it's just not exactly a tourism.
Yeah, we, I think what it shows is that we certainly are, are outperforming in that. As you would expect, given Norfolk's reliance on convention and business travelers and our reliance during the season we're talking about on more vacation rounds. But we're, we're certainly not pulling the average down.
And that was a big part of our partnership with Norfolk. During the, during the pandemic, a lot of our attractions were closed. And so that partnership with them and being able to provide a really comprehensive attractions pass spanning the region, we, we actually opened it up to other DMAs, or excuse me, other local cities as well to participate in that initiative. Truly regional marketing is a conversation we're having right now with our advertising advisory committee and what that looks like moving forward. It is best practice if it makes sense. So while this campaign partnership with Norfolk is scheduled to expire in November, I'm looking forward to working with, with our AAC members to discuss future opportunities with them.
Okay, anybody else? Ms. Henley.
Well, thank you for a very definitely excited and dynamic presentation. I want to compliment you on your presentation and your attitude. I think, I'm sure your whole team must share that in order to bring us such a positive report today. And I do recall that presentation back in February when we were, and that was a very exciting presentation too. This time, we're really going to stay open. And I, I think we, we probably all recognize how important it is that we work together to make sure that we do stay open in Virginia Beach and takes all of us to do that. But I want to compliment you on your, your obviously excitement for what you're doing. And thank you for that.
You're welcome. Thank you for your support.
Anybody else? Mr. Tower.
I'd just like to say, well done to you, Tiffany. I think, I think your entire group with, under Bill's help and Ron Williams has done, stepped up and taken a big bite out of all the issues as well. You're doing a great job. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd just like to echo what the folks have said so far. It was kudos to you and your group, but it takes a lot of folks to run the city during a pandemic. And the fact is, I want to give Mr. Williams against kudos for his team. You know, we came up with a plan that even the governor said that was a template for the rest of the nation on how to open safely. Without that, that would have, you know, stopped things, you know, abruptly. But the fact that we were able to get open, it took a lot of hard work by a lot of people and initiatives. And, you know, our success is probably the envy of many people in the nation right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, members of council. Next up is the equally exciting interim financial report provided by the Finance Department. Director Kelly will have the pleasure of giving you the FY '21 City Revenue Expenditures Outlook through September 30th.
Talk about setting a high bar.
Well, thank you very much, City Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor Woods, City Council Member. I'm pleased to give you a interim financial statements through September 30th. I will not show any commercials. And we have equally good news for our, our first quarter. Our revenues for the first quarter are at 8.7% of revenues, which is very positive compared to our budget. And our revenues for the year do not necessarily go in a straight line. And so the first few, few months of the year do not have our real estate and our personal property. So at 8.7%, it's very comparable to last year's percentage. Our expenditures are at 31.6%. And that's our FY, our first quarter. For our revenues, we have about nine streams of different types of local revenues. Real estate and personal property tax, which really, we don't bill and receive until November and December. So you'll see very small dollar amounts for that. Our local taxes are at 19.5%, which is about comparable to last year's percentage. Although in FY 2021, we did reduce that, the budget by about 24 million in that particular local revenue stream. Charges for services were very, also another revenue stream that was a little bit impacted by the pandemic. And we'll talk about those a little bit further. The next table is our trustee taxes, March through September, which is our pandemic. This is for the whole city, these trustee taxes, not just the general fund. And this table was put in here for you to see the impact between 2019 and 2020. And each, each month, we had a slight reduction, obviously, in each of these types of trustee taxes and some were much more impactful than other. Our hotel taxes, as Tiffany pointed out, our occupancy has almost reached back to the projected level from previous years. And we're at 6% reduction, which is a phenomenal bounce back for the hotel. Meals are also at 5% less than last year. Well, you can see in June and July, the impact of our hotel, I'm sorry, our holiday for our meals tax. So trustee taxes run one month behind. So when we had the meal tax holiday in May and June, we were one month behind. And so you'll see the impact in June and July, not May and June.
Okay, Ms. Abbott has a question.
Do you want, do you want me to wait till the end or can I? I have a very specific question to this slide, so is that okay? For the meals tax holiday, do we, unless I missed it when I was looking at the, the presentation, do we know what the, do we have a way of collecting what the sales, the overall sales in the restaurant?
Yes, we do have that. I did not put it in here, but we do have that. A lot of times, the point of sale systems that some of our restaurants use, they just didn't change, so we did collect some. But we do have a, a table that we can definitely get to council next week if we wanted to do that.
So, just so I understand what you said back to me. We, we still collected the information like we would have collected the tax. So we know what their sales were and we can compare that to 2019? I'd be very interested to see how, what the, what the.
The changes were.
Yeah, thank you.
Right. Our Commissioner of Revenue gets that every, every month. And then the Treasurer has the collections and we compare the two. All right. The other trustee type tax is actually on a two-month lag is our sales tax at the bottom. And what we have seen is there, while there's some reduction, it wasn't as drastic as our other trustee type tax. Our sales tax did perform nicely over the past few months. The next slide shows, similar to Tiffany's slide, the occupancy. This is the taxes that we collected. And as you can see, FY '19 is the blue bar and the orange bar is 2020. You could see our occupancy and our hotel tax reaching almost to the same amount, same number in August and September. And then meals tax, you can see the dip with the holiday that we took. But it did reach back almost to the same level as previous year. Another revenue stream that was impacted by the pandemic is our charges for services. And this is our charges for services for all government, not just general fund, except for the ones that are asterisked. And we have had some of our revenues were down. One of the things I wanted to point out, this is on a cash basis. We did have some extra revenue come in for the aquarium in October that really was related to September, that 800,000. So that should be about $3 million there. But while our charges for services were down, we do anticipate that we will have enough appropriation left for those and make up the revenue difference at the end. And we'll continue to monitor these. I think we have enough revenue streams from the other types of revenue to cover some of the reductions in these types of revenue. Another charge for services are water and our stormwater and our waste management. And they are running true to, true to last year's percentages for their budget. So those are not been impacted as much by the pandemic. Our expenditures are, include the $6 million for hazardous pay in our salaries as well as some of our encumbrances are slightly higher for this year because we have a new financial system and we're encumbering money a little bit differently than we had in previous years. But overall expenditures are running very true to form. And this glide chart, which I usually show in the beginning, the comment was made, well, I can't see the difference between last year and this year. And that was, we left that way on purpose. It's almost exactly the same as the past two years' history. So we were, we were clear, pleased to see that, that revenues and expenses are running almost similarly to the past two years. So in summary, in FY '20, the city had about $35 million of eligible care expenses that today council has the appropriation to approve for the remaining part of the CARES funds. Our FY 2020 for schools, the true up, the school is reverting back a little less than $3 million to the city. And they have a reversion amount of $39 million. Had nothing, has no CARES money in that at all. And then our FY '21 general revenue and expenditures are tracking comparable prior years, which is a positive thing to say. And then in October, our October updates will be November 24th. We'll have audited financial statements on December 8th and then an update for the first six months in January 19th.
Overall, pretty good news. Any questions? Ms. Abbott and Ms. Henley.
On the, the slide before this and your summary, the 35 million that we spent, do you know roughly what percentage of that was reimbursement versus, I don't know, like we made that expense using that money?
Sure. So the CARES Act gave us the city, the flexibility, or all cities, the flexibility of reimbursing public salaries, public safety and public health salaries. And about the, out of that 35 million. out of that 35 million, about 30 million of that is the salaries. And about 5 million is non-salaries, like IT-type equipment, public health, public safe, PPE, personal protective gear. And of that 5 million, about 2 million is general fund, and the rest are tip and tap.
But how much of it was submitted via a reimbursement versus being expended directly?
5 million.
Okay.
The 30 million is, was appropriated-
I got you.
Already. But so anything that was salaries was appropriated already. Anything that was non-salary was additional expenditures for pandemic.
Thank you. I have one other question. This one's for the City Manager, though. Mr. City Manager, can we get at a later date, the approximate number of water, like, payment plan requests? Because I know that we were allowing people to defer their payment. Can we get an idea of what impact we actually saw on that? I realize, I guess, for the budget purposes, that was pretty unaffected. So I guess that's good news. But I'm curious as to what the actual impact for people that were requesting deferment of their payment. Thank you.
Good. Ms. Henley.
Actually, that was the question I was going to have. If we really know how many people took advantage of those opportunities and so forth, it would be good to see if that was needed and utilized, or we don't want to have to use that as an experience for any time else, but just in case. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Ms. Wilson.
So how much of the CARES Act money do we have that's not accounted for, as far as?
Because we have salaries that are eligible, we can use all of the salaries to be eligible for CARES Act. So we can cover the 78.5 million received by the CARES Act. But we have requested council to appropriate a lot of the salaries because that will free up money in the fund balance to use for other things. Right now, we have, September, October, November, December, we have three more months worth of salaries to go through. We have approximately 5 million that was done in FY 20, and about 7 million done in FY 21 in IT, PPE-type equipment, that type of thing, for reimbursement for pandemic expenditures. Because I, I don't know if that gets to the exact answer of your question. So we still have some funds left because we haven't spent all the salaries yet.
So I was talking with a member of the Board of Supervisors of York County last night, and she said that they, New York County used some of the CARES Act money to offset their employees' healthcare costs.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know if that's been considered. So they didn't get them a raise, but it helped them in other ways by helping them with their, with their healthcare.
And I think that would be a City Manager's question, but I think you can't really use it for pande, you can't use it for the CARES Act money. But obviously, if you have money that's budgeted and we're applying CARES Act money, the, the expenditures fall to fund balance, and you can use that extra fund balance to do whatever council and the City Manager determine. Does that make sense?
Well, and I have another question.
Okay.
I wasn't finished. My, I thought Patrick was going to say something. Did, no, no, go ahead, go ahead.
The response I was going to say, Councilmember Wilson, that's something you want us to look into. We can provide a report. You know, but I think to Alice's point, if we were to use CARES Act money for that, it would specifically have to be for public safety and public health. But considering that we are reimbursing public safety salary, as we mentioned before, we're freeing up a significant amount of money that's going to give council a tremendous amount of flexibility to kind of make a lot of decisions and adjustments or contributions towards the public and the community to the maximum extent possible with that flexible release of the funds.
So I'm assuming that means the schools will have the same opportunities in their budget?
They, they have what's called elementary and secondary school funding that they're applying for. And my understanding is they have 10 million that they've applied for and another 12 million that they can apply for. They also have to share that and have meetings with other private schools. And so they do have funding from CARES Act. It's not this particular CARES Act funding. But they do have about 22 million that they haven't spent yet.
So my other-
That's eligible.
So my other question is in regard to high-tech money, like for broadband. Is there more money coming to help expand broadband and hotspots and?
There's, oh, okay. City Manager wanted to answer that, so.
Right, right. Those kinds of things.
Sure.
I mean, I, I have an understanding that there, there may be. Do we have any idea about that?
So Councilmember Wilson, the governor announced the release of funds, specifically CARES Act money for broadband support. And we submitted a letter to council of some recommended projects that the IT department is possibly going to go for in terms of securing some of that funding to help pay for as well.
Well, I think with the virus and homeschooling and working from home and all the different things.
Sure.
I think now more than ever, we realize how important that broadband is. Thank you for your, for your patience.
And I apologize for cutting you off before. Okay, Ms. Henley.
Since you're talking about CARES Act and, and use of that money for employee salaries, certainly a, a result of the COVID is the fact that I suppose we're having to pay an awful lot of overtime, particularly to our public safety folks, because when someone has to be quarantined and, or even a whole shift of people have to be quarantined, that's a lot of overtime. I'm assuming that that's what CARES Act is, is out there for?
Yes.
And of course, we have it for our public safety, but I feel certain that it's going to be an issue with teachers as well. So is that, how is that working out? Because I know we have a lot of positions that, you know, when someone is, has to be out for a quarantine or something, that position still has to be filled by somebody else. And that's costing quite a lot of money, I think.
Sure. So for the public safety, all their salary is covered under CARES Act. And we have more than enough salaries to reimburse the CARES Act. For the teachers, I couldn't speak to that as much. I knew they had a $39 million reversion back to the city, that council could definitely, they haven't proposed what they were going to ask for, if they're going to ask for that back. But I would think that would be part of what they can use for overtime.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Encouraging, very encouraging.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the last presentation will be given by Deputy City Manager David Bradley. He'll present on the CIP projects that were held up by council as well as the projects held up by staff to get a sense of direction in terms of next step. And these were projects that were held up in the last proposed budget. We will also discuss the possibility of reinstating the market salary survey that was eliminated from the proposed budget. But we're looking for direction today for the CIP projects.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. Going back to last spring, I remember, you know, when the pandemic hit, we had just put our proposed budget, and we were finished. And I was thinking, this is, you know, it's an awful time for any pandemic. What a bad time from our timing. But it actually, I think, ended up being a good timing from the standpoint of council, was engaged in the budget. You did it virtually. You've already seen in the previous two presentations, the positive impact that I think this budget has had on the marketing and the changes that you made. And you can see that our financial results are doing really well. So one of the things that happened during that period is there were kind of four categories of CIP projects that we looked at and said, hey, we need to put these things on hold. Part of that was a budget issue, part of it was cash flow. And when the mayor and vice mayor kind of wrote their reconciliation letter, they included that we should have quarterly reviews of where we are before we make any other decisions. So we kind of looked at it as, let's close out the books, which, as you've seen, we did really well. We're going to have the highest fund balance we've had in years. And part of that is we backed off some CIP commitments when we did the budget. In our first quarter results, you've seen, we, we did pretty, pretty good. So that's, that's looking good. So here are the four categories that we had. One of the things that the mayor and vice mayor recommended and council agreed to was, let's take 14 projects. They are approximately $22 million of what we call pay-as-you-go, cash funding in the CIP. Let's put that on hold. We're going to reserve it, and then we can revisit that later. We are not recommending at this point releasing that $22 million. Think it's still too early. We'd recommend waiting till after the second quarter and see how we do. At the second quarter, we'll have real estate taxes in. So we'll have a better feel for how we're doing. But then there were three, three other projects. One of them was the $30 million for the renovations of Buildings 1, 2, and 11. That was really a cash flow issue, and I'll explain that shortly. And then we also put the helicopter in the Burton Station Fire Station EMS on hold. The 30 million requires council action for us to be able to move forward on it. That was part of the reconciliation that you did. You put it in a reserve and said, you need to have an ordinance before we release it. The other two were actually done by Acting City Manager Tom Leahy. He did that on his own. He just felt like that was the prudent thing to do at that point. But we thought we'd package them together today so you could look at them holistically. So the project for Buildings 1, 2, and 11, obviously, after the tragedy of May 31st, we had to move almost 400 employees to 28 locations. And then in July, Tom Nicholas, who's here to answer any questions, gave presentations to City Council on what we could do moving forward. And what was proposed was a, a $83 million project that would renovate Buildings 1, 2, and 11. Council agreed to that and put $4 million in place at that time in July of 2019. And we've moved forward. We're working, you know, we've had Mosley Architects do bridging documents. We've issued a request for proposal. We have firms that are responding to that, and they're spending money to be able to do that. But that will not move forward unless council wants that, that project at this point to move forward. So what will happen, if you recall, Building, Buildings 1 will have planning and public utilities. Building 2 is where our police department will be in the first precinct. And Building 11 would have public works and part of information technology. And those departments are spread out across the city right now. This project was funded by public facility revenue bonds. And this is what, I just want to talk about cash flow. So this really wasn't a budget issue as much as it was a cash flow issue. In the spring, we had no idea how much of the economy was going to shut down. So we were really concerned about spending a significant amount of money, just knowing, you know, the bond market, for example. We didn't know if we'd be able to enter the bond market and, and sell our, our bonds, which we eventually did and got great rates. But now, at this point, we feel like, you know, based on everything we've seen, our cash flow is sufficient to go ahead and move forward with this project, meaning that in the city, we're in such a good position because we're AAA, we can expend the money today and then reimburse ourselves with bonds down the road. So that's what we mean by cash flow in, in that example. So, you know, we have a favorable bid climate right now. We have leases for many of the departments in place through the fall of '24. And we think bringing public utilities, public works, IT back to the municipal center will help with the coordination and all the things that we've always been able to do. Citizens will be able to come, have more of a one-stop-shop experience, and be able to get their business done. So we're recommending that you move forward with this. We feel like that the position we're in from the first quarter, we can do that. And from this one, we would need your approval to go ahead and put this as an ordinance at, at a next council meeting. Here's a few images of, of what the Building 2 will look like when it's done. So some initial conceptual work. The helicopter replacement, you'll, it's interesting with these next two, the dates where decisions were made, where this is to replace a 30-year-old helicopter. We have two. In March, at the beginning of March, council had actually transferred money to make this happen. But by the end of March, we realized that this probably doesn't make sense right now to move this one forward. So the City Manager, Acting City Manager Tom Leahy, put it on hold. When we replace this helicopter, it's going to be the same model as the one we have. And that's going to be important. That's going to help with parts. I think it'll be more effective repairs. Training will be easier as people work on it. Since then, and I think just because of the market, we've actually been able to get more savings out of it if we move forward today. So we could get over $200,000 in savings, and we can move that into another CIP, you know, in the future, or whatever council would desire. That one does not need your formal approval. We just felt like it was important to bring it to you and package these together. Then you had Burton Station come up. That construction bid was opened in February. So here you go again, the timing of all these things, you know, a month before we're moving forward. And the low bidder has agreed to extend their bid through, up till December 31st, if they're notified by November 1st. And the main reason that we kind of pulled this one back is we, it's, it's really not the cost of the building that's the issue in this case, it's the staffing of it. You know, we're going to have to put 30 firefighters and six paramedics. So all that was brought out of the budget. When we originally proposed a budget, those positions were in there. And I think council at that time and staff said, hey, it probably doesn't make sense until we know where we're at in this pandemic before we move forward with those. So you're going to get a briefing next week where the City Manager is seeking guidance on the upcoming budget. He has some proposals that he's looking at. And at this point, we would like to move forward with Burton Station. It will have a partial impact in next year's budget, because we'll need some of those positions. But then it will be annualized in the fiscal year '23 budget. So we're hoping, and, you know, from everything we're seeing fiscally, would be past the pandemic. So here's a rendering of what that station looks like. Once again, council doesn't need to take formal action. What we're kind of asking today is, would you like us to move forward with, with those projects? So last but not least is the market salary survey. We're not asking council to take any action on that today. Regina Hilliard, the Director of Human Resources, will be coming next week, and she will be talking about where we are with our market salary survey. The last one we did was 2011. The ordinance that guides our market salary survey was actually done in 2006. So many of you were not on council at that time. And when we looked at it, there were six things that council asked us to do at that time. Three of them have been accomplished. So it's time to, to relook at that. And she's going to give you an update on that. But we, we're trying to bring this presentation, and we're going to do more of these quarterly, to see where, what council wants us to do as far as moving forward on projects. So that's what we're really asking for today, if council would like us to move forward with the renovations, the Buildings 1, 2, and 11, the helicopter and the Burton Station Fire Station.
Let's have some questions, and then we'll come up with the direction. Ms. Abbott?
Thank you. I have a question about the amount of money that's budgeted in terms for the Building 1 renovation and the, I'm sorry, the Building 2 renovation and Burton Station. My understanding is that construction materials are increasing pretty significantly due to delays in the manufacturing chain. How much have we budgeted for, for potential increases? And are we, have we done any research in, in what we expect to see with those costs increasing, especially as we get down the line? My concern is that we get, you know, six months into that process, and all of a sudden, construction materials are either difficult to source or extremely expensive. So I'm just curious where we're at in that part.
I'm going to probably turn it over to Tom. But the good news on Burton Station is we have a bid in place that they're willing to stand by if we let them know by November 1st. And the Buildings 1, 1, 2, and 11 are ongoing.
So, and, David, I'm sorry, before you walk away, are they locked into that bid regardless of what the market does? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm going to let Tom.
Okay. So, I mean, if they're locked, if they give us a bid and the cost of construction materials increases exponentially, I mean, don't, does, do they have a right to come back and renegotiate with us? Or, I'll let you speak. I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am. So this procurement, it's, it's a, it's a design, build, negotiate procurement. So we issued a request for qualifications in January, got seven qualification statements in in February. From that, we selected five per city ordinance, five people to issue a request for proposal, too. We issued that request for proposal in really the late April, or, I'm sorry, it was right about the, yeah, early April, with proposals to come in in June. So when we receive proposals on that type of a, an environment, we're selecting a best value winner. In this case, I can't talk specifics because this procurement is still in, in process. But price was approximately a quarter of the points necessary to win the procurement. We did get three proposals in. Those proposals have been evaluated. the procurement. We did get three proposals in. Those proposals have been evaluated. And we, so the, when those proposals came in on the 1st of September, their number that they proposed for Buildings 1, 2, and 11 was locked. They, they told us on the 1st of September what they believe it's going to cost for the design and renovation of those three buildings, regardless of what actually plays out. When we make the selection, we will have a negotiation period, probably for about two to three weeks, to make sure that number is all inclusive of everything we want. But when we sign the contract, no, it's a final contract. It's firm. Now, we have seen very favorable pricing this fall because of the lack of work elsewhere. So we feel right now we're in a position where we have a very attractive number, which is why we would like to move forward, because we don't think that number is going to stay attractive if we choose to delay this procurement or perhaps put it off and do this process again. Timber materials have gone up. There's not a whole lot of timber in the interior renovations of Buildings 1, 2, and 11. So we're not particularly concerned about that material. Everything else is relatively depressed. And so we are excited about the ability to get this number now, if that's, if that's your desire.
So just a follow-up. In terms of, I understand that they're locked into that price.
Yes, ma'am.
But let's say we are in January of next year, and for whatever piece of material they need, it's either no longer available or astronomically priced, and they're unable to complete the job. What happens?
Okay. So within all of our contracts, city contracts, they have the ability to notify us of that and either request a change order, or if, if we are unwilling to grant a change order, there is a dispute process where they can come forth and say, look, we wanted to do this. We were planning to do this. We, we totally meant to comply, but we couldn't. And, and we generally negotiate through such a situation. So it, it's not, you have to be very, very careful not to allow somebody to make a mistake and then come back and say, well, that mistake was really the cost of this material that went up and, and that you end up paying more money for. But we're, we're going through some situations right now with, with New City Hall and, and brick delivery, which is a very, that's one of the situations where the delivery of the brick for New City Hall is somewhat delayed because of coronavirus and that impacting that plant and their ability to produce brick and deliver it here. I don't know whether that will cost us money. It will cost us time. But, but we are, we are sensitive to that.
Well, that answers my question. I just wanted to make sure we had a process for dealing with
Sure.
that potential situation. Thank you.
Ms. Wilson and then Ms. Henley.
I think these are all very worthy things for us to pursue if, you know, if, if it's good, you know, if we have the money, which you seem to say we, we have. But I'm, I'm very, very excited, too, about this salary survey, because I think we're finding out with our public safety and our police officers and our, and our waste management folks. And we're, we're not, you know, they, we're not paying them enough money. And our teachers, I don't know if you're going to include teachers in that.
It'd probably be city-only, council member Wilson. I mean, because I think they have their own review of what they do.
Well, if we're going to be doing something and it has a cost to it, we may want to talk to them to see, because there might be some savings to be able to include some of the areas that they may have to.
I'll be glad.
I think that's a worthy conversation to be having.
Yes, ma'am. We'll, we'll talk to Mr. Hansiger and, and see if he'd like to be included.
Yeah. But I'm really, really excited about doing this because I think this is information we really need to have. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And Ms. Henley.
Well, I think this is an example of you don't appreciate what you've got until you don't have it. And having that municipal center campus, we just didn't appreciate it enough. And I think it's really important that we get that back and get all of our folks back there and so forth. The, the timeframe, again, the, the municipal, the City Hall building is supposed to be complete about next summer. And if we begin, if we move forward Building 2 at this time, when would you anticipate that that would be ready?
Yes, ma'am. So our original thoughts were that City Hall would be finishing in early summer of 2021, which enables us to then get in, once it's done, and put in our audio visual and the city-owned stuff to occupy it in the fall of 2021. And we were hopeful prior to coronavirus that we would have renovated Building 2 to be done at the same time. So you would take people out of City Hall and put them into the new City Hall. At the same time, you're taking the police and police headquarters, First Precinct, out of Building 11, putting them in Building 2, which then frees up the current City Hall and Building 11 to be renovated at the same time, which is a tremendous opportunity for the contractor, to have two buildings to work simultaneously. When we delayed Building 2, we sort of made that impossible, because we will now finish City Hall in the late spring or summer of 2021, and we will have occupied that probably three to four months before we are done with Building 2. Right now, I'm thinking Building 2 would be done in the spring of 2022. So we would occupy City Hall in, in the October, November timeframe of 2021. And then in the February, March timeframe of 2022, we'd finish Building 2 and move the police precinct and, First Police Precinct and Police Headquarters into that building in late spring or early summer. Then whether the contractor chose to wait till both buildings were empty to start working on them, or whether they wanted to work on Building 1 and then 2 staggered, we're leaving that up as a means and methods. But the whole thing would be done by the summer of 2024. We, we'd have all, all, all four of those signature buildings done, and everyone returned back to campus.
Well, I think that certainly speaks to the fact that we don't want to wait any longer. And if this is moving Building 2 forward, we definitely need to do this. I sure hope we're not here at the convention center until next fall. Please.
Okay. All right. At this point, we, we do have to move forward. Oh, Mr. Jones.
As far as the Burton Station project is concerned, I see the funds are available for use on that project. And, you know, we have a vacuum out there in terms of public safety. And that was the reason for this project. And it just seems to be the responsible thing to do is to go ahead and build this project when we have the funds available to do it and not continue to allow this vacuum to exist as far as public safety is concerned. So I, I would hope that we would move forward with that.
Okay. At this point, is the council okay with us directing staff to move forward with their money initiatives as recommended? Any objections? Okay.
Thank you.
Go forward.
Thank you.
Okay. At this point, council liaison reports. None? Council comments?
This wasn't fast enough. I'm sorry. Back to what we discussed briefly last week with this redevelopment and infill situation that you had asked Aaron and, and I to, to kind of help you move forward with. Just to get back to that, I hope you all had a chance to read what we passed out as a, a very preliminary idea last week. And we did get some comments from Mr. Moss. I hope we can have some from the others of you. You know, I think when we talk about redevelopment and infill, it means that those places that are going to, that are the, the subject of our consideration have neighbors. And it, it just seemed to us that we sort of need to look at this in two steps. The first step, which needs to be done as soon as possible, is, is from this discussion. And that's the message that we would send to adjoining property owners, that they're going to be considered. And this would require that the applicant let us know when they submit an application, what the impact is going to be to the adjoining property owners during construction and after construction. And we had some suggestions here. And then we also had some suggestions about some increased civic engagement opportunities that we would require had to be done as a part of the application before it went to Planning Commission. So I really hope you can look at this again. Please let us have any comments you have this week to let us know you're on track. And I would like for this to be a topic of our discussion next week in our workshop. Because then if we can put together this policy, I would hope that we could adopt it in early November, so that any future applicants will know that we're going to be looking at these questions with the neighbors, when we're considering their application, and will be prepared and will have this. We really need to make sure that all these things that are in the pipeline now are, are covered by this new policy. And then the second step will be talking about the uses that were, are perhaps the appropriate uses for some of these rehabilitated commercial areas and so forth. That conversation needs to be a little longer. And I hope we'll have some recommendations for you on that to talk about next week, too. But if we could just move this forward, so we get it, get these applications that are in the pipeline now covered with this new policy, so that we make sure that we are giving adequate consideration and comfort to neighbors when we're talking about these things. I think that will allow the discussion about uses to go more smoothly. So please, if we could have some discussion next week to move this forward and during this week, if any of you have any comments for us, please send them along our way. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. And Mr. Duhany and Madam Clerk, if we can get that on the agenda for next week. Okay. Any other council comments? Okay. Council agenda review.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Council comments? You have the other, the next issue. I have a couple of things under comments. That was liaison report.
Oh, no, no, that was comments.
Oh, that was, well, okay. Maybe that liaison reports, and now this is comments.
Okay.
Just to let you know, next week, October 28th and 29th, we have set to do the reforestation tree planting project at the former Village D of Asheville Park. Any of you who are willing to get your hands dirty and want to come out and be a part of that, we'd love to have you take, take a, an opportunity to, to work with that. I noticed that on our agenda today, we have a, the grant to do the update of our urban forestry plan, which I think is extremely timely, because we'll be able to incorporate the evapotranspiration and the work that we have done with that. Dr. McLaughlin made the comment during one of our sessions that Virginia Beach has one of the best urban forestry plans and background with our LIDAR that he's seen in the country. So I think we're moving forward with that very well. I think there is also an HRSD application on our agenda today, that HRSD is doing some additional landscaping and work in that same area as the Asheville Park. I'm hearing that there may be some holdup on our ability to, that agreement with insurance. I hope that's not a fact, because it, it's very exciting to have that particular area, along with another tree planting that's going to be done by the Homeowners Association and the nonprofit Lynn Haven River Now in that same area in early November in the Ocean Lakes neighborhood. So there's a lot going on there with our natural mitigation and so forth. And I, I think that's a real plus. And we just wanted you all to know about that. One other issue that maybe I might not be so popular by suggesting, but in looking at our future meetings, I noticed that, you know, we normally in December take a break after the first two weeks. But December 8th is awfully early for us to take a break. I really don't think we need to break that early, particularly in the middle of a pandemic. We've missed too many meetings. I really think we need to go to the third Tuesday. I, I kind of feel that we, we've lost a lot of time, and, and maybe we have not had the communication that we could have or that we might need. So please, I, I think we need to, I, I don't think we need a month's break at that time. I think we've missed enough time already. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. If this, we got to get to executive. We can do, you know, consent agenda, please.
Okay. Under ordinances and resolutions, item 1, there are multiple speakers. Item 13, there's a request to defer that one to December 8th, 2020. Item 15, there's a request for indefinite deferral. And item 18, there's a speaker. Does anybody want to change any of these items? Or vote against them, or?
[inaudible]
Item 1, we have multiple speakers. Item 13 is going to be a consent for deferral to December 8th. Item 15 is a consent for indefinite deferral. And item 18, there's a couple of speakers on that.
Okay.
Is everybody okay with all, rest of everything being on consent?
Okay. All right. Planning?
Under planning, we have, I'll just start, 64th Street LLC, short-term rental, 205 64th Street, Lynn Haven District. I'm okay with it. Is anybody else? Anybody want to vote no on it? Item, item J1?
Ms. Henley, no.
I'll be voting no on these short-term rentals.
Okay. Item 2, CNC Development Company, Inc., CGE Real Estate LLC, 2416 Arctic Avenue, Beach District. Ms. Tower?
I'm sorry?
Could you turn on your mic?
Yeah, please.
I'm good with that, Mr. Wood. Thank you.
There's too many microphones on at the moment. I hear a lot of reverb. I'm not sure who's.
Well, mine's on.
I understand. Can everybody just check your microphones?
I was good, Madam Clerk.
All right. Stuart and Lori Goldwag, Short-Term Rental, 2002 Baltic Avenue, Beach District.
I'm okay with that one, Mr. Wood.
Okay. Item 4, JKS Proponent Properties. You okay with that one?
Did you get three?
I just did three.
I'm sorry.
Stuart and Lori Goldwag. Item 4 is JKS Proponent Properties, 30428 Street. Is that one okay?
Yes.
Okay. Item 5, Rachel Panerilo, Short-Term Rental at 911 Pacific Avenue.
Yes.
Item 6, Carol Davis, Short-Term Rental, 1305 Chickadee Lane.
There are no speakers on this one?
I don't know. Just, just the applicant, I think. We have, we have two speakers on every single item, but, but specific to this one, no.
I'm okay with.
Vice Mayor, would you show me his vote no on that one, please?
That was number 6.
Number 6.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 7, we're hearing. Item 8, actually, do we have a speaker on that? I can't really tell from this.
We have.
7, we're hearing.
Number 8, we have two, we have three speakers signed up, plus the applicant. However, I'm not sure if they are in favor or opposed. They have not. So once they, when, when they check in with us, we'll find out.
All right. So I'm going to mark this one as hearing it, and then it may change. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Moving forward, the chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from open meeting allowed by Section 2.237 11A Code of Virginia as amended for the following purposes: publicly held property; discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose, or of disposition of publicly held property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.237 11A 3 Princess Anne District AARP. Personnel matters discussions considerations are interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to Section 2.237 11A 1, which is council appointments, council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Abbott. Councilmember Lurie is absent. Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
Not a zero.
Okay. We are recessing into executive.